What I wanted to do before we started tonight is to just take a moment to remember our former chairman, Roger Putnam, who died last month, and who was valiant with this board through the May meeting. Really tour de force for somebody who is 97 years old. He had a powerful effect on all of us, and we all miss him. So just a moment to think about Roger. Thank you. Okay, we are in session. And, oh, and I also wanted to welcome Trevor Pontebrianne as our new regular member of the board. Officially approved last Tuesday. Okay. 1904 Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod Incorporated. The board continues to be myself, Trevor, Will Sullivan, Rita Ciotti, and Bruce Drucker. And the public hearing is closed, which means we are not taking any more testimony from the audience. We are simply moving to findings of fact, and for that we are asking Town Council to walk us through this.
Madam Chairman, I need to recuse myself?
Yes.
Don't forget to get me back.
We'll get you.
I was getting nervous, Madam Chair. I didn't see anyone from Habitat in the audience so good. I believe Christine has provided you with the latest draft decision? Okay. So I exchanged that with Warren Brody, attorney for Habitat for Humanity. And he had a couple of changes, none of which I would consider to be substantive. There was one change that was requested, and that was what I was speaking with the building inspector with, is at what point at which would the building inspector require as-built plans? We had originally proposed, at the time that they seeked the first building permit, Habitat has asked for a later period, and it makes some sense, because until you actually start sticking a shovel in the ground, you don't know if your plans may change. So I think we're now of a mind to jump in here, Justin, if you disagree. Up until, we want the as-built plans prior to the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy? And you would want that for each unit, correct? Okay. So that'll be one change that we would make. Just a few things, if we could, that jumped out at me, that things that we do need to address. One is the idea of Old Kings Highway being a scenic way. And obviously, the ZBA would act in place of the DPW and/or the planning board with respect to any sort of alterations to any stone walls that might exist, or any clearing or trimming of trees. I haven't heard anything from Habitat as to whether or not anything like that is planned along Old Kings Highway?
With regard to removing trees?
Or any alteration. And I don't recall from my one site visit out there, I don't recall there being any stone walls, but if there were...
No, there, as far as I know, there are not.
There's nothing, okay. Do we know the width of Old Kings Highway? Was that roughly? I know it's narrow, but I'm not...
Depends what part of Old Kings Highway you're talking about.
No, that's a fair point, too, okay. I didn't know if that was something... We do have to just clarify the assessor's map and lot numbers, because there's a little bit of discrepancy between map and lot numbers that were part of the application of the assessor's certified list this time versus the planning board decision from a few years ago. So I want to make sure we've incorporated all the correct assessor map and lot numbers. I don't know if that's something that, Elizabeth, if you might have tonight, or if not?
I do not.
You do not, okay. So we'll have to have that subject to confirmation.
A quick point. The site plan does show Old Kings Highway as being 40 feet wide. At least the layout is 40 feet wide.
Layout is, okay. All right, thank you. One thing also, I did receive an email from the fire chief about the Hammerhead roadway layout, and he did confirm that he's fine with it. His one request has been that the turnaround area has to be kept clear for emergency vehicles in order for this to obviously work. So one thought I had was to include as a condition that there be something that's put into the Homeowners Association documents as a covenant, and perhaps also that goes with the deeds, to make sure that there's not going to be any parking. So if folks wind up having a cookout or something like that, they can't be parking down in that area. The plans, as far as I understand, they were dated January 31, 2019. I'm not aware of there being any revisions to those plans, if anyone else...
I don't believe to those plans. They have the subdivision plan, and there was just an addition with regard to adding that the area was unbuildable as requested.
So notation to the plan, okay.
I have a copy here, if you'd like it.
Okay, so the ZBA is actually going to have to endorse that, so... Do we have a date on the revision for that plan?
5/16/2019, added non-buildable notation for Lot 5.
Great, thank you. One other thought, too, is that we don't have to do this, but if you would like to do this, under all the various submittals, I know there have been a number of comments that have been submitted in writing, whether they've been from members of the public or from departments or other boards. And if you'd like them to be listed in the decision as part of your overall record, I would just need copies of those to be able to do that and plug those in. Otherwise, what I came up with was a more generic statement that just said, "We received various public comments, both verbally and in writing, all of which are reflected in the minutes." So it's whatever your preference would be.
I'd like the last one.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
That's cleaner.
Yeah. And they are in the file, should anyone want to see them, so...
All right. So the only other question I had was whether or not the board had any additional conditions they wanted to consider. I know, for example, one of them, in proposed condition number 11, it's under Section G. There were some restrictions about cutting of trees and that sort of thing in the open space with a buffer area. If there was anything else like that that the board wanted to consider, this would certainly be the time to do so.
Does anyone have any?
No comment.
No?
I think now that Council is also here, I believe we've captured every waiver that was granted, and waivers that were withdrawn. We've removed those from the list. So I think, Madam Chair, unless the board has anything they wish to add to this, the decision is ready for you to vote on.
Everyone had a chance to see the findings and the conditions, and are you ready to...
We're ready. I'm so grateful Ms. Murray did it.
I am, too. I'm very grateful for Ms. Murray. All right, so I guess I entertain a motion to accept the findings.
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I entertain a motion to grant this comprehensive permit based on the findings and the conditions laid forth.
And I'll so move, subject to the conditions.
Okay.
Second, I wonder if we should reread the conditions quickly, just to know what they are? Review what they are? What page are they on?
Pages. They begin on page 17 with general conditions, and we can read those. I don't know if there are any other conditions.
These are the general conditions?
The general conditions.
We don't need to read them out loud.
Okay.
So, my second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, could I ask for one further vote of the board?
Certainly.
There are still a couple of things that need to be cleaned up, or, you know, I'll put in the correct assessor's map, update the subdivision of plan date. Could I ask for a vote of the board authorizing you to sign the decision on behalf of the board, so that way I'll get a clean decision to Christine? And I believe we have until July 23rd would be our 40 days for the decision. If I recall, we closed the public hearing on June 13th, so the 23rd would be our 40-day deadline. So in the next day or two, I will get the clean decision to Christine. And then if you come in and sign it, it can just be reported with the town clerk's office.
Okay. So I need a motion to authorize me to sign the cleaned-up conditions.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does that mean that I stamp this, or do we stamp other things instead?
That is, I believe that's the revised subdivision plan, right? So again, that would have to be signed by either, that should be signed by the majority of the board, because that's a little bit different in that you're acting in place of the planning board there. The board could similarly take a vote and authorize you to sign on your behalf, but...
I'll so move that the chair be authorized to sign on behalf of all of us.
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
So then I, we aren't stamping anything tonight. We're stamping them when we're all together?
If you are prepared to stamp the subdivision plan tonight, you could do that, because that does get attached to the decision.
I think we are. This is the revised one with the...
Takes about two minutes to melt the wax today.
I know.
Just kidding. Here we go.
All right. Chris, do you need more than one of these?
Yeah, I may have it back in the office. So if I have another one, I'll stamp it and...
I'll sign it.
So who gets that one?
The applicant should get it.
The applicant?
You think?
Can you just tell me the date on that?
Yes. This is the one, this is January 31, 2019, as revised on 5/16/2019.
Yes.
You have him actually sign this one? With a Mylar?
The Mylar for recording, right?
Over by the Mylar.
And do they need this? We have this generic, after your special permit is approved. Do you want it, or does it...
One of them.
Sure.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you for running. Okay. All right, so I think we're done.
May I address the board briefly?
Certainly.
Okay, so, you know, we're Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod. We built 130-odd homes. We don't make a dime on any single one. In fact, we lose a ton of money every time we sell a house. We've been engaged in this process with the Wellfleet Housing Authority for four years. We have been through the planning board, the zoning board, twice. We have, at all times, tried to listen to the concerns of the community and addressed them properly. We have changed the design of this project to reduce the amount of clearcutting from the original design by a substantial amount. We have increased the amount of stormwater measures substantially, so that our design is actually 50% more than the law requires be done. We know that there are abutters that can appeal this. They've done it before. They took advantage of an irregularity in the process and actually won. But we're not going to give up. Habitat is not going to give up. The Wellfleet Housing Authority is not going to give in. And all the abutters, who I understand are largely summer residents, all that they may accomplish by an appeal is delaying the construction of four affordable homes in a community that has fewer than 2% of its housing in the affordable housing inventory. I would just say to those folks, think about it before you add it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Cal, and you'll get that one put together, or I'll come and sign?
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you to all of you, and also to the Council, who do an exceptional job.
Thank you for your presentation. It was very helpful.
Very helpful. All right. Doing better. All right. Next case tonight is 1912, meant for the old bank. And this is application for a special permit was continued from June. The board is Mr. Drucker, Mr. Heiliger, Mr. Lynch, myself, and Mr. Pontebrianne. And I believe the public hearing is closed. And again, what we're doing is just working through the findings with Town Council. So if you have something further to tell us, we'll move on to...
Well, just very briefly, I do want to, again, appreciate, extend our appreciation to Town Council. I have been working with her. We do have a couple of minor edits to the proposed decision, but on the whole, it really very well addressed what we were requesting, what came out at the hearing, and again, we appreciate her assistance in pulling this together.
And to that end, Madam Chair, the revisions that were requested by the applicant, I think, again, in your packets, I think Christine did provide you with what those edits were.
Yep.
Do you want me to point those out?
Yes, please.
Okay. And please, if I overlook some of the redlining, please let me know. I believe the first one occurs under paragraph 2, activity type, mix, and intensity of the proposed use. In sub-paragraph A, it originally stated that the proposed use will be open year-round. They've requested to change that language to the proposed use is anticipated to be open year-round, which I believe was consistent with statements that were made at the prior hearing.
Yes.
One question I did have in this section while we are here is sub-paragraph D, about in the event that there is a traffic flow issue, or traffic flows anyhow inhibited or obstructed, does the board wish to include a condition that the applicant will agree to convert to an appointment-only business model, or to use police details? Or what is the will of the board on that?
I'm sorry, Ms. Murray, what did the applicant say about that one?
They didn't. This was just something I had highlighted in that area as, you know, something that we should talk about. But I can go through the applicant's edits first, and then come back to this, okay? The next edit from the applicant was in paragraph, section 3E. I think this is just very minor. I had that the applicant proposed a modest 2-by-8-foot sign over the gable entrance, illuminated by goose neck lighting. The applicant has actually changed that just a little bit to say that the applicant proposes a modest 2-foot-by-8-foot sign over the gable entrance, illuminated by goose neck lighting, and stating "old bank dispensary", as well as additional signage in compliance with Section 7. Oops, and that should say...
To be the Wellfleet zoning board.
Of the Wellfleet zoning bylaws.
We have enough trouble with our own.
That's why we read these things.
They allow bigger signs.
We will assume you meant Wellfleet for that, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I believe that's all, the applicant?
Okay.
Now, there's one other change on the conditions, having to do with the hours of operation. And that, we weren't seeking to extend the hours of operation, but simply to clarify that at closing time, if there are customers lined up, because, again, this is a situation where they have to limit how many people can be in the retail store at any one point in time. If customers are in line at 8 o'clock, they can be served. But no additional customers could come in line after 8 o'clock, or... That was really the concern. Come 8 o'clock hour, if somebody's standing at the door, just waiting for their turn to come in, they can be served, but if somebody else drives in, they will not be able to be served that day. They'd have to come back the next day.
Fine.
I've just got one question.
Yes.
Another question, then. Are you comfortable with going to an appointment only if the traffic's too bad, as opposed to having a choice of a police detail?
So my thought on that, and I apologize if that wasn't clear in the last meeting, was I would prefer to go to appointment only if it's congested. However, as a condition, I would rather it be limited to the hours that are congested, because I can foresee a scenario where the peak hours, generally in this industry, you get half of your customers in a two-hour period between 5:00 and 7:00. And so I expect, if there is a congestion problem, it could be just limited to those hours. And if it's on the verge, then I would prefer to be able to have walk-ins available certain hours, and appointment-only other hours. If it's a total, I don't want to use the right word, but...
Do we need to delete the use of police details to control traffic from the findings?
Is that whether you'd want that option versus the appointment only? This basically says you have to do one of these.
That's what I'm asking.
I think if it's a condition, that one or the other would be better.
Go to appointments?
At the time.
Okay, that's what I thought. Yeah, that's what I thought from last month.
I can say, in conjunction with the town and police department.
Thank you.
So I'm not sure what we decided on that. I think we've gone through the...
When we decided we would agree that, first of all, that the change we had looked for was to be sure that the going to either the traffic detail or the by appointment only would only be during the peak congestion times. In other words, if there's two hours a day that's congested, he doesn't have to do appointment only the whole day. And that really was a concern.
Sure, yeah.
And I think having the option of either one or the other, obviously, if he goes to the appointment only and there's still a problem, then police detail may be the other way to approach it.
So we leave both of those in as a condition?
I think it's an either-or?
Or, yes.
Yeah.
It's an either-or. So right now, we're going to go with appointment if there is too much traffic, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's the way I understand it, okay.
And I think what they're saying is they would prefer not to have to go to appointment only for all hours of the day when the congestion is, yeah.
That's what I understand. Yeah, that's fine.
It's a practical matter. Aren't we just talking about the summer?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was...
I mean, you're not talking about January and February.
No.
Hopefully, yes, but probably not.
Oh, well, you know, you can live in hope and die in despair in this world. But if you can get a line in January, keep it.
Don't go to appointment only.
I submit that the line might be longer in February than it is in the summer.
Except on leap year. But I was just curious.
Yes, I was just curious about that. Got to make sure we get this right.
Yep. Okay.
Ms. Murray, I just have a question which I had put in, just to help me. There's something in here about there's going to be a limit of three. And I'm trying to find out where that came from, because the last I heard, the Select Board was still discussing that.
And I can explain that, and I've actually revised that language a little bit as a result of it. Right now, because Wellfleet voted yes on ballot question 4 in favor of legalizing recreational marijuana, right now, if the town wanted to limit the number of marijuana retailers to a number that would be less than 20% of the liquor license establishments that are issued under Chapter 138, Section 15, the town would have to not only adopt a bylaw, but would also have to have a ballot question approving that. And of course, as you know, when we were at town meeting, trying to adopt some regulatory zoning bylaws for recreational marijuana, that was voted down. So you have no zoning specific to recreational marijuana, and certainly no limitations on the number. My understanding, and I had to go back through some of my exchanges with the town administrator, the town currently issues nine liquor licenses, but the town has the capacity to issue 13 liquor licenses. And sometimes it fluctuates a little bit seasonally. So right now, the town could not allow fewer than two marijuana retailers. And if we actually use the number 13, or ever go up to the number 13, they would have to allow at least three marijuana retailers. So that's where that number had come from. But since the 20% is a sliding scale, depending upon what your population is and how many licenses actually are issued at any given time, that number three, it could be two, it could be four. It's all going to depend. So what I proposed doing with the condition that addressed that under the suitability of the proposed location, so it's paragraph 1A7, where I had put one of three marijuana establishments, instead, I thought if we simply say that it is one, it is a marijuana establishment that may be permitted with the town by the Select Board pursuant to Article 10 of the general bylaws, we should be fine with that. So that if that number goes up or goes down, it's immaterial to this applicant.
But the only reason I'm asking is because it's sort of helpful on a go-forward basis.
Sure, right.
But as of now, is it correct that the Board of Selectmen hasn't limited the number of licenses?
They have not limited. There has been an awful lot of discussion. And I thought, and I could be wrong in this, but at last count, I thought they had entered into three host-community agreements.
Yeah, but they haven't limited. That's all I'm trying to get at. I'm just trying to understand that, I'm not...
The only limitation in the bylaw is simply that the number of marijuana retailers cannot be less than 20% of the number of liquor licenses. So whatever that leads to.
What I got out of looking at a couple of videos is that they weren't sure what they were going to do.
I think that's fair. There's been a lot of discussion about whether they should limit, and if they should, what should they limit it at. But right now, there is no limitation.
Thank you.
I've got one question for Town Council. Is it my understanding that the Cannabis Control Commission is the be-all and end-all? They decide who's going to get what?
Absolutely.
So you can have a host agreement, but it doesn't matter if they don't agree to it? They're the ones that have the last say in the whole lot?
Well, they don't currently have any say in the host-community agreement, other than the fact that an applicant has to have a host-community agreement in order to seek the license from the Cannabis Control Commission. There is a lot of attention that has been paid at the state level to what some have felt has been a little bit of overreach by communities with respect to the limitations that we can seek under a host-community agreement. And there's been some thought that maybe the Cannabis Control Commission should have a more active role in reviewing those agreements, but that doesn't currently exist. But they do need to provide proof of one to the Cannabis do need to provide proof of one to the Cannabis Control Commission.
Okay.
And that actually reminds me, that dovetails with a suggestion that was also made to me that we should, since we also mentioned the host community agreement here in this special permit, we should require that the applicant provide a copy of that executed agreement to the board so that you have it as part of your file.
Okay.
So I will add that in as a condition.
Was that all the edits?
So have we reached consensus then with respect to the police details or appointment only, that it would be in the event that traffic is somehow obstructed, that the applicant will agree to convert to appointment only or use police details to control traffic flow? Did I hear during those peak hours of congestion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Only during those peak hours?
Yeah.
And who's going to determine what the peak hours of congestion are?
Let the Board of Selectmen do it. That should take a while. We'll get by the peak hours. I'm sorry, I shouldn't say these things.
You could defer to the police chief on that, too. That's up to you.
Well, I think the business owner is gonna not want a lot of congestion in front of his store anyway.
Right. I think we can rely on the business owner to take care of it.
I believe most businesses are self-regulating on this sort of thing.
Yeah.
They don't want people not to get to their store.
And also, with respect to the suitability of the proposed location under paragraph 1A, finding six, I had that no existing businesses or residences will be impacted by the proposed use. And I think Mr. Drucker, you had suggested it should state will be adversely impacted.
Somebody wrote a letter saying he is impacted.
That's a fair point.
And we're just making the judgment he's not adversely impacted.
Yeah, right.
And are solar panels going to be used? That's a definite?
Mm-hmm.
So the only other question that still remains, and I know I raised this last time, and I apologize, we do still need to come to an agreement as to the square footage that they are actually going to occupy, and therefore the number of parking spaces that they are required to have. And I know there was some discussion last time about backing out, say, some common areas or areas that were not open to the public, which is not what our bylaw provides. But I still don't have a grand total of the square footage that the retailer will occupy.
We actually, Zach confirmed with the architect. And here's the situation we have. The total square footage of the first floor, which is what is going to be involved in the retail operations, 1,162 square feet. However, of that, 668 square feet is all that's available to the public, to the retail public. The rest is either the vault or employee-only areas. So looking at the parking requirements under the bylaws, at the 1162, you end up with requiring eight spaces. At the 668, it's five spaces. And then, given the number of employees, we need two spaces for the employees. So it's either if you take the entire first-floor area, you're looking at a total of 10 spaces. If you take the area that's available to the public, you have a total of seven spaces being required. So that's where we ended up numbers-wise. Yeah, it's one of those situations where we're providing parking for the employees, but they're going to be exclusively in a good part of the 1162 that we're then applying, providing parking spaces for the public.
How many parking spaces are you providing? I can't recall.
We have 14.
I thought there were 14. So you're fine either way.
Yeah.
Right. The question just becomes whether or not the development of significant impact is triggered. Because if 10 or more parking spaces are required, then we were supposed to get a recommendation from the planning board. Granted, it is only a recommendation from the planning board, but still. If this board determines that the square footage of the use does not require 10 or more parking spaces, then we don't even need to include this in the special permit decision. Or we could use the 1,162 square feet and the eight parking spaces plus two for employees brings us to 10, we could then just simply recognize that the planning board did not provide a recommendation on this?
Yeah. The planning board actually said they did not need to provide a recommendation. They didn't write, put it in writing, but that is what we heard from the chair of the planning board.
Right.
So we could just say they didn't provide a recommendation.
I think that's fine. I think we have to use the 10 spaces because our bylaw says we have to calculate the whole area, not just the area that the customers are using.
Right, right.
And we have 14 spaces.
And they have enough anyway.
And they have enough, so...
Right, but is a, there's the potential for a future tenant, right?
Yeah.
So the parking would have to be readdressed at that point, yes.
Yes, yeah. Future tenant would trigger another special permit.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll use the 1,162 square feet and eight spaces for the retail and two spaces for employees.
Right.
Does the board wish to include a statement that a future tenant would require a readjustment or reallocation of parking, or do we feel that's not necessary because any other use would have to come before this board anyway?
Correct.
I think it's not necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Could we, I just, I did want to clarify one aspect of this. That small black bedroom outbuilding has been used, and I don't, it's not open this year, but there isn't?
Within 24 months.
Within the past two years, has been actually a retail establishment.
Yes.
So I guess the question being if that is going to be used for retail within the two-year period, would it require a new special permit or where it's a continuation of a retail operation in that structure?
Question is, you'd need a permit, probably not a, it's a continuation of a use, but now we'd need to relook at the parking.
If you're gonna use it for a tenant, I think you first go to the building inspector.
Yeah.
And he'll give you some guidance whether you need to come to us or not.
Yeah.
But Madam Chair, that's all I have unless the board has any additional comments or revisions or conditions.
I have a comment. I'm uncomfortable with the traffic, the way how it's, we're talking about setting it up, because in the middle of the day, 12 to 2 o'clock, the traffic on Route 6 is terrible. So I don't know who came up with the 5 to 7 top-peak times.
I just want to clarify, it's not that we would only restrict that, those hours. I was giving that as an example of any hours that are congested, we would move to an appointment only or...
So why couldn't we say that during the summer, that it would be all day instead of just a couple of hours?
If you would like, that's fine. The reason is, we just don't know
Right, so...
what the demand will be. And to go appointment only if only 10 people want to show up during the day seems silly.
I think the way we have it worded now, it would require them to do either the police detail or go to an on appointment basis.
But from my understanding...
At any point that the traffic is bad enough that either the Board of Selectmen or the police chief deems it necessary.
Right.
Wouldn't matter whether it was summer, wouldn't matter if it was 5 or noon or 2 or if it was all day or for half an hour. It would be any time that the traffic was bad, right?
It's not limited to two hours a day. It is limited to the times of a particular day that the traffic is bad.
Okay, well, I misunderstood it.
Yeah.
No, I think we're good the way it's written now.
And the other thing is that, you know, we're talking about traffic at his store. Traffic on Route 6 that is backed up may not be backed up into the old bank between 12 and 2. It's backed up on Route 6 going to Brobbins Town.
Right.
You know, so it would only have to be...
We'll see.
We'll see.
You have greater hope for his business than I do, really.
But you know, you have the problem, not the problem, the issue, that there's a lot of uncertainty.
Right.
This gentleman and every other marijuana facility has given 3% of their gross to the town to address the very problems that are in here.
Right.
And I think this is gonna be more of a political issue than a legal issue. And the political issue is, will the Board of Selectmen take these funds and use them to address the traffic and other problems, or will they go to general municipal purposes? And that's a political issue for the Board of Selectmen. You know, 3% of gross is a heck of a knock. I mean, you know, I've seen lease agreements where stores give less to the landlord, so, you know, I think the Board of Selectmen will sooner rather than later have to come to grips with the issue. Are they really gonna use this money for what they say in the contract?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
Oh, one more.
Yes, by all means.
Just my name. Would you delete the N in Heiliger when you retire?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes.
We can do that.
You might want it that way.
That's an easy one.
All right, so I think I go, I need a motion to accept the findings.
I will make a motion to accept the findings. Second.
All in favor? And then I need a motion to grant the special permit based on the findings, but you have to finish up the findings.
I will make a motion to grant the special permit based on the findings that have been submitted. Second.
All in favor? All right.
And again, Madam Chair, if I could ask for you to be authorized to sign this on behalf of the board?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Okay. And this is a use permit, so I'm not stamping a site plan.
Just one quick question. Does any specific vote need to be taken with respect to the development impact issue where with the 10 spaces, we do trigger that requirement?
I think the way we're going to resolve that, but it wouldn't be a bad idea to actually take a specific vote, is to find that the retail, the marijuana retailer will occupy 1,162 square feet and therefore, under the zoning bylaw, requires a total of 10 parking spaces dedicated to this use, which does trigger the development of significant impact provision of the bylaw. However, there was no recommendation received from the planning board.
Right.
So there's no prohibition to the zoning board of appeals proceeding to grant a special permit, notwithstanding that lack of recommendation.
Okay.
That's right. The bylaw is sort of funny because it says if there's 10 or more, or I don't know if it's 10 or 11, you give a set of plans to the planning board. There's nothing that requires them to do a recommend, to do, make a recommendation.
Right.
And there's no time limit. It's sort of strange. I mean, you really read how it might operate in the real world.
Right.
So I think you've accomplished what all that can be accomplished.
Yeah. I don't think we need a separate vote on that, do we? Do we need a separate vote on that?
Where you voted to approve the special permit, I think that incorporates all that they've asked for.
I think so.
Whether it is under, you know, whether it is just under the special permit bylaw itself, but certainly you could go ahead and take a vote with respect to the development of significant impact provision as well. You could do it.
I think it's necessary.
Can't hurt.
Dan Horton, are you comfortable, Mr. Murphy, if we take that vote?
Yes, I am.
Is that what you're looking for?
You can't appeal for not getting, it's a recommendation only. It's not an appealable issue under any circumstances.
I don't either. Right.
I mean, we value the recommendation, but there's nothing compelling them to do it.
Right. It's...
So what are we doing then?
So I don't think we decided we don't need to do it. So there we go. Yeah.
We're good.
We're good. All right. Thank you very much, Town Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
We couldn't have gotten through this without you.
No, we could not have gotten through this without you.
I want to thank all of the board members and Town Council. It's been really a great experience dealing with you, and Zach really appreciates the concerns, and he's committed to being a good businessman here at Wellfleet.
Good luck to you.
Yes, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Murphy.
Okay.
Enjoy the rest of your meeting, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay. All right. Our next case is 1908 Barasana, but the attorney has asked us to put that a little later because of the, he's tied up in another meeting elsewhere. So we're gonna move on to three cases, 1909, 1910, and 1918 Rispoli Ventures. And the applicant has asked that these be withdrawn without prejudice. So I need separate votes on all three of them in order to withdraw these without prejudice. So the first one is 1909.
Make a motion to allow them to withdraw 1909 without prejudice. Second.
Wait, you can't do that because you were recused from this one.
I'll correct your right.
I'll move to allow 1909 to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Okay, and...
Second.
Second, yes, you can do that. All right, all in favor?
All right.
Okay.
I'll move to allow 1910 to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second.
All in favor?
And I will move to allow case number 19-18 to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. All right.
You got through three so quickly.
I know. Well, when an applicant withdraws, it does make things easier.
You might beat Roger's record there.
That's right. Okay, and now we are going to go again, because we're waiting on the attorney, we're gonna go to 1915, Harborside Village, C.C. James Tierney. Application for an exemption flood hazard district regulations. Applicant wishes to construct it addition to the dwelling. So tell us about what you're doing. Oh, the board, yes. It is Mr. Drucker, Mr. Heiliger, Mr. Lynch, Mr. Ponte Briand, and myself.
I can leave it over there.
Okay. So tell us about it.
I was waiting for you guys. My plan is, we are taking, I have a 10 by 20-foot addition to the side of the trailer. I'm taking it down, and I'm gonna enlarge it to a 14 by 31, which will keep us under the 840-square-foot ruling that has been deemed by the town to do. So it's, we're taking the deck down. It's just strictly the 835 square feet, and we've done all our CONSCOM business, got all the paperwork, got the stamped drawings. Your turn.
Okay. Were there any letters on this one?
No.
Anyone from the audience like to speak on this particular one? All right, questions from the board.
Confirm with our secretary that they didn't in fact go through CONSCOM?
Is that a yes?
She said yes.
Yes, I just didn't hear.
Dan, did you have any questions on this one?
Well, one question I have is that they're requesting, under the bylaw, 6.13, but shouldn't it really be 6.14? Aren't they asking for a special permit under 6.14? And 6.14 has some very specific criteria. I think 6.13 just sets up the overlay district.
What was the question?
The question is, should it be 6.14 instead of 6.13?
Yeah, 6.14.3, I think is the one.
All right. So it's misstated on the application.
Yeah, it's just a typo.
Well, 6.13 is floodplain district zoning regulation.
Right, but 6, yeah, 6.14 is the regulation, and basically it says that there's no new dwellings allowed, except you can get an exemption under 6.14.3 and that criteria. So isn't that what we should be looking at?
I mean...
It's that which we should be looking, are we looking at 16...
6.14.
6.14 or 6.13?
I was looking at 6.14.
Okay, the applicant had filed under 6.13.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So we're 6.14. Anything else? Dan, did anything else?
I guess I'm trying to understand, again, I'm relatively new to all this, I'm new on the board. So I'm trying to understand how we decide an exemption is allowed, like, what's the hardship, what's, how do we do that?
If it meets the criteria of 6.14.3.
Right, I understand that, but I mean, for example, what's the hardship under which we're granting it?
A hardship is you can't have the addition.
I don't think we need to show that there's a hardship. We need to go through, I mean, technically, we should go through each of those sections, 6.14.3.1, and we should determine whether or not this would result in increased flood heights, decreased flood storage capacity, additional threats to public safety, extraordinary public expense, or cause fraud or victimization upon the public. And I think it's pretty safe to say in this case that it would not.
Right.
Therefore, they meet that requirement. We can go through the list.
Yeah.
Right.
I think maybe before that, it might be good to take a vote to allow the applicant to amend their application to file under section 6.14.3, if they are in agreement with that.
Yeah.
So let's maybe vote on that.
Okay, so can I have a motion to allow the applicant to file under 6.1.4? 6.14, rather.
So moved.
What is, can you say it again? I'm hearing it.
It is, it is a motion to allow the applicant to amend, so that the applicant is filing under 6.14.
Point 3.
Point 3.
6.1?
4.3.
Is there a point between them?
No, 6.14.3.
14.3.
Wait one second. I'll catch that.
Right. And I think.
It was moved and I seconded.
Bruce moved and Trevor seconded to allow the applicant, so all in favor of allowing the applicant to do that? Okay, all right.
Typically, what we do is we go through it, and then we make findings that show that it meets those criteria. That's the way we usually do it. Have you, perhaps, has anyone written findings for this already?
Yes, Bruce has, but I'm going to make sure, nobody else has any other questions. We're still stuck on, we haven't heard from anyone else, so just want to make sure. Will, did you have any questions on this one?
Well, I'm following up on what Jan said about 6.14.3.3, a determination that failure to grant the variance, well, we're not, we're not asking for it.
It's not a variance.
Is that a loose use of words?
I think it's just semantics in the way that the bylaw is written.
Yeah, because it's not a variance.
Then if either, it's a, if it's, if variance is a, just a use, loose use of words, then the applicant would need to show that not granting this would be an extreme hardship to the applicant. We certainly haven't heard anything in that regard tonight.
Look, we've given about 20 of these to this trailer park. Does someone really think that this is the only one that's going to flood?
I'm new in town, I just read the ordinance, and that's what it says, you know? Not making it up.
In 2007, you gave 10 of them.
Yeah, we do this all the time.
We're under a blanket, and we just have to stay under the 840, and we comply to with everything.
I would also note that in a conversation I had with the applicant on site, they did note that they were raising the whole thing up, which would do exactly what the floodplain exemption is intended to do, which allows water to move underneath the structure, so.
Right.
My concern was just doing it under the right section of our bylaws, which is 6.14.
Do we want to make a vote to amend today?
We did that.
We already did that.
We've amended now. Okay, do you have anything further?
I have nothing further than that.
Retha, do you have anything to ask? Nope, Manny?
I'm all set.
Bruce?
I'm fine. I think it's pretty routine stuff.
I'd move that we go to Finex.
Second.
All in favor? All right, now, pay attention.
I've got a feeling everyone's going to want to amend these.
Yes, pay attention to the findings, to make sure they have covered 6.14.3.
You don't want to slip something by that, wouldn't comply. This is an application for a floodplain exemption under Wellfleet zoning bylaw 6.14.3. The zoning Board of Appeals has received and reviewed the plans and drawings pertaining to the project, all of which are in the file. The zoning Board of Appeals has made a site inspection of the subject lot. The lot is in the floodplain district. Follow me closely on this one, Trevor, because I'm not 100% sure. There's a single-story, 400-square-foot trailer on the lot, and the applicant proposes to add a 430-foot, 430-square-foot trailer, as shown on the drawing in the file.
Well, technically, there's a 400-square-foot trailer with an existing 430, no, an existing 200-square-foot addition on it.
Thank you.
The applicant proposes to remove the 200-square-foot addition.
Plus decks. There are decks that are land coverage, there are decks.
I don't care about the decks.
They're coming off.
They don't count as coverage.
Okay.
To remove the 200-square-foot addition and replace it with a 434-square-foot addition.
Thank you, that's why I asked you to watch, because I knew I had messed that one up. And you also said he's going to raise it?
He's also going to raise it.
Right.
And the applicant will raise the addition?
And the existing trailer.
And the existing trailer.
But do you know by how much?
We're looking at 18 to 24 inches.
So I would say just by 18 to 24 inches.
Right.
Thank you. That's why you became a permanent member and get the big bucks.
That's right.
There are no objections from the butters. The applicant has obtained approval of the Wellfleet Conservation Commission in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 131, Section 40, the Wetlands Protection Act, and the Town of Wellfleet's Environmental Protection Bylaw. The proposal will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing trailer, and the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and vicinity after considering the district objectives for the residential district, blah, 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 and the relevant criteria set forth. The board finds that granting the exemption will not result in increased flood heights, decreased flood storage capacity, additional threats to public safety, extraordinary public expense, cause fraud on or victimization of the public, or conflict with existing local laws. That's all I have, but welcome any additions.
Did you note that they've gotten Conservation Commission approval?
They did.
Yes.
You did.
Has obtained approval of the Wellfleet Conservation, yes, thank you.
Anything else? All right, move to accept the findings.
I'll move to accept the findings as written.
As written and amended.
As amended, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you. And I'll move to grant the special permit for a floodplain exemption subject to the following conditions. The applicant will comply with the State Building Code, Section 744.0, and further, the applicant is advised pursuant to Wellfleet Zone bylaw 6.14.4, that the issuance of the exemption may result in increased premium rates for flood insurance. That's all I have.
Second. All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, we are granting a floodplain exemption.
We don't have to stamp anything.
We don't stamp anything, because we're not stamping the building plans.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
You'll get a copy of this after it's signed and typed.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Do you think you can get the president of your group to approve this?
You can, you can have this one.
I hear that.
Tells you about after your substantial permit is approved.
Thank you.
Alrighty, I still don't see Ben.
Where are we now?
Well, I still don't see Ben, so I think we're going to 19.16. Just make sure I've, that. 19.16, appeal from person aggrieved regarding said property on 185 Briar Lane, Act 13, Parcel 120. For intensification of use and increased noise levels and congestion, the board will consist of Mr. Heiliger, Mr. Lynch, myself, Mr. Ponte Briand, and Mr. Sullivan.
I'm sorry, who's sitting out on this one?
Manny, Mick, myself, Trevor, and Will.
Sorry, you told my story?
Yeah, basically, we need to know exactly what action you are appealing, because we're not clear on that.
Well, all I can say is I just get the microphone.
You have to, you have to talk to the microphone.
I lived at 180 Briar Lane for 16 years, and pretty much the garage, or the historic 1930s garage across the street from me was quiet, and I never had any complaints. When I first moved in, there was, Jimmy Rogers was working in there, and he always shut the door, it was very quiet. And then Bob Fitzgerald moved in, it's his property, and it was quiet. I know he was moving his, I remember him moving his cars in and out. I know he worked at the tech, and evidently, I heard that he worked in a garage up in Eastham for a while. So it was really a very quiet place. Two years ago, actually almost three years ago, suddenly there was just continuous noise all the time, to the extent that sometimes my phone was interrupted because reverberations from the noise comes up through the ground into my house. The congestion on the road, last week, one time I couldn't pull out of my driveway, and I could not pull into my driveway, because the lot across the street was so full of cars, people were pulling into my driveway to pick someone up or waiting for a space to open. So overall, the noise level suddenly increased exponentially, and the traffic congestion. From what I understand, Bob had gone to the Historical Society to request to change his lift under the guise of safety, and I understand that the building was always a one-man operation. I spoke with Betty Rogers, and she said that she remembers a singular pit. So there was always, if somebody was working in there, there was always one person working in there, and again, sometimes he made some noise, but it was not continuous and all the time. So I spoke to, they had gone to the Historical Committee to request to change the lift, and they had asked to put in this bigger one. I don't even know if they need that. They punched a hole in the roof and put this technical mechanism in there that doubles the output rate. So when that started, the noise just got, I mean, it's continuous, and they were working till 7 o'clock sometimes, six days a week. It just, it's, the intensity of activity suddenly increased, and the noise levels and the traffic congestion just also increased. And it was no longer this quiet garage that I had lived across from for 16 years. I spoke to Lydia Vivante, who was on the Historical Committee, and I asked her, when they requested to change the lift, did she and the committee think about intensification of use and increased volume of noise? And she said, no, they didn't. So there is some misunderstanding as to what the Historical Committee can allow and can't allow. So it all seems to be this kind of soupy mess, and what I discovered at the end is that, which is why I included it, it says that it's a storage garage 100%. So I printed up the mobile station, and it says that it is a service garage 100%. So I'm not even sure that this building is grandfathered to be a garage. So for me, I noticed a change. There was a change in a technical tool in the building, it doesn't even fit into the building, and from that point on, there were two mechanics working there, and the noise and the traffic congestion just increased. I mean, I can't talk on the phone sometimes, and I have meetings online, and I have to mute myself because the reverberations are coming up through the ground. They are, I included some photographs, the tow trucks, his work is spilling into the road, to that secondary road. So there are tow trucks dispensing of cars on the road, there are cars and trucks idling on the road, and though that sometimes happened before, not to this degree.
Okay, so a couple of questions. One is that you're saying this started two years ago. Now, we are not the board that regulates noise levels in town.
Or traffic.
Or traffic. We are, you know, if we had granted a permit for increased use that in fact led to something that you could agree with the permit.
There doesn't seem to be any permits anywhere for any of this.
So I guess what I need to do now is to ask the building inspector to tell us a little bit more about the background of this, so we sort of know where we are with this.
Okay, thank you.
Justin Post, building inspector. There's not a whole lot of clarity on this. We, there's a permit in 2016 for roofing and siding. It did, there was a roofing permit that went to the Historic Board for consideration regarding the roof permit, which happens, and this was previous to me. That roof permit got done and roofed and sided, whatever. There's, and that was 7/26/16, 12/11/18, there was another roofing permit for some roof repairs, roof covering that I issued, and that was also closed out.
Okay. And have you gotten noise complaints from this property in general?
The complaints I've received have been from this complaint.
Wasn't there someone that called the first summer afterwards? It wasn't me?
Perhaps.
And when, when did the first request to enforce the noise thing come in?
I believe last year, I believe last year, it was this one that started, and, yes.
When it first started, I actually thought that the owner, Bob Fitzgerald, was helping Brian out, because I knew Brian was no longer working at the mobile, so I didn't really say anything. But the following spring, which was, was it a year ago? It continued, and then I thought, well, okay, something is very, very different here.
Good a question.
I don't know why we're hearing this.
Yes.
This has nothing to do with, if the applicant has an issue with noise, she should talk to the police department.
It's also the traffic congestion.
The issue, if the applicant has an issue with the traffic, she should talk to the police department.
Yeah.
It has nothing to do with this.
It's intensification of activity.
No, I think the fact of the matter is, we hear appeals.
Yeah.
So if there was a decision that was made against you or for the folks, let me speak, please.
Sorry.
There's, we hear appeals. And so I feel, I read this, and I go, what are we supposed to do? There's no appeal, there's no application. It says there's an application, but there's no relief that, this isn't what we do.
This was done under the guidance of Justin. Justin asked me to do this.
Perhaps there isn't included in the packet, the request for enforcement and the denial of enforcement letter that I had sent to Rebecca approximately six months ago, I think.
Okay.
So that, there is that paper trail out there.
I see. Do we have the request for enforcement? I don't know that we have the actual denial of enforcement.
It wasn't in my packet.
It does exist, I can get it to the board.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see it.
No.
But again, that doesn't, this board can't give you relief, because we don't have an appeal, an appeal does not exist.
You can talk to the microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
There's no mechanism for this board to do anything.
Well, this is, I talked to Justin about this, and this is what he told me to do, to write this up and to come to you, and this is how it's done, so I'm following the building inspector's guidance.
Okay, well, it's a moot point.
Yeah, the problem we have is, is. Yeah, the, the problem we have is, is, as Will says, we can, if, if you were, someone was granted a permit and you were appealing the granting of that permit, we would have a mechanism for looking at this case.
So what about, so in the absence of anything that, because there has been no request to make any of these changes, you can't, and there obviously is a change. You're saying that because there have been no requests, there's nothing I can do for these things that have been done that were made with no requests?
No, the answer is nothing we can do. Nothing we can do, you're at the wrong board.
Oh, so?
Well, I think the lack of the inclusion of my denial letter in the packet is, should have been in there.
The problem is the changes that seem to have been made to this property were changes in roofing and siding, which is a change that an applicant in an ongoing business can make by right. So the fact that it has resulted in intensity of use, I don't.
And the permits were granted in oh five?
Two sixteen, two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and eighteen. And the permits are for, I mean, the, the one to change the dormers is from two thousand and five.
Right.
Correct.
And then the.
No, that's for the back building, we're talking about the front building.
Okay, then the, the only other two permits we have here are roofing and siding permits, one in two thousand and sixteen and one in two thousand and eighteen.
But again, they were issued by right and did not come from the zoning board.
Building and siding, roofing and siding ones would be issued by right, so.
So there's, there's an absence of any permits, really, they're just, they went to the Historical Society and requested to change a lift. So there's an absence of any permits in relation to this change that led to this intensification of use. So I guess Justin doesn't know how to handle this, so how do I handle this?
Quite frankly, that's not for us to answer.
Okay.
That, that's not our role, we hear appeals, not to give advice.
So, Justin?
So there's not much we can do here, but.
Your primary complaint seems to be that they're making noise and that there's traffic issues.
Well, there's an intensification of use.
So what?
It's actually in here that a change.
Businesses do grow.
Yeah, I mean, if Mac sells an extra hamburger tonight, are we supposed to drag him in there for, for selling too many hamburgers?
No.
And if you have problems with traffic or noise, call the police.
The other thing too, prior to you purchasing your house, back in the late eighties, that was a really busy building. That was, it's always been historically a busy garage.
Which built in a garage, yeah.
Garage.
The garage.
I guess basically, I mean, the big problem we have here.
You couldn't, it was always busy.
Yes, but I've been living here for sixteen years.
I'm talking prior to sixteen, I'm going back twenty-five years.
But, but, then again, that doesn't really matter. The problem here is that we could give relief on a permit if, but in this case, the applicant by right can, can change the roof. We, he doesn't have to come before us as an ongoing business. And so since there was no permit granted, we can't look at the permit and say this was illegally granted, so.
You had me do this, you said this is the way.
I agree, and the lack of my inclusion, the include, the lack of the inclusion of my denial letter does make that true. If there's a denial letter to enforcement, that does get you to the board. There was that denial letter in the winter months that should have.
So we have to do this again and you bring it in?
I'm, I'm not sure that's correct, Justin.
I don't think you're.
Maybe it's not.
You shouldn't tell, you shouldn't give advice.
All right, okay, well, thank you all very much, thank you.
Um, what do we do about the application that we have in front of us?
Well.
Before the applicant leaves, we should figure out what to do with the application that's in front of us. Should it be withdrawn, denied?
Mr. Post, could you come back and find out what we're doing with the application in front of us?
Is the application not for a special permit? It's not even.
No, no.
No, the application, no, it's not for a special permit. So do you want to withdraw this application without prejudice, which allows you to think about it? Or do you want to, do you want us to go ahead and deny the per, the application? It's, that's, we have to do something.
I have no idea, this is, we talked to Justin because there has been a change in intensity of use, which I understand from what I've read, that's really not allowed. So this is what he suggested I do and I'm new to this, so I don't know what to tell you. We come back again, he brings this letter in.
Now, that doesn't change anything. I don't see how it changes anything.
Even if he brings the letter in, I mean, there's not, what, there's what can we, there's nothing we can do. I think the applicant should withdraw the application that's before us.
What if, yeah, withdraw the application.
Yeah, that allows you the flexibility to figure out what you want to do next.
Okay, all right, I withdraw the application, thank you.
So I need a motion to accept the.
I'll, I'll make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw the application without prejudice.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Okay, well. There's still no Ben, but we're gonna.
Do you want to do minutes and keep her?
No, no, we can go ahead. Okay, so you want us to do minutes and, okay. We should have the minutes from the.
Okay.
From the June meeting, right, Chris? Those the only minutes we have? So someone who was at the June meeting needs to move the minutes.
I will move the minutes of June, what?
June.
Whatever. We only had one meeting in June.
Yeah, the middle of June.
Yeah. The minutes of June thirteenth.
Second.
All in favor? I guess we can take a slight break.
Two-minute recess? Two-minute recess?
Two-minute recess while we wait for. All right, get back in here.
I told Ben we granted it.
What? No, we did not.
But he can still charge the fee.
All right, we are calling. Where's my list? There it is, nineteen oh eight Barasano, this was continued from May. The board is Bruce, Sharon Mick, Manny, and Trevor will substitute for Roger. And Trevor has signed because he was in attendance at the earlier hearing. Came back with a change, tell us about it.
Thank you all for waiting, Chris, well, how long were you waiting?
Forever.
About two hours.
I'm really sorry.
No, Ben, we just, five minutes.
We gave you five minutes, you're not a full professor.
At the last, at the last meeting, the board heard the application, this is Dana Barasano, who's a property owner, heard the application and, and we had a pretty good discussion, but then they suggested that we go back and we look at the front. So what Dana did with his, with his, with his architect, Peter Kinnane, who's here with us in the front row, and Tim Brady, who's the engineer, made some changes to the structure. And those changes are primarily, what Peter did was he has depressed the foundation a half foot into the ground, took the floor a half foot, and then he's taken a foot out of the framework itself of the house. He's dropping the entire house a foot and a half, the ridge height, he's dropping it down a foot and a half. And if you look at Tim Brady's site plan, dated five twenty-one, he had the building height calculations. So the frame height is twenty point seven five feet, the ridge elevation is at one oh four seven five, where it's maximum allowed at one oh eight point five. So it's roughly, let's see, about three and a half feet below the maximum ridge height. He also squeezed the house by two feet to try to reduce the floor area of the house. And if you look at the new floor plans, you'll note that the rooms get smaller. In fact, the bedrooms are only about nine feet by nine feet, they're, they're just over what would be allowable under building code, which is seventy square feet for buildings. So they've, they've dropped the, they've dropped the size of the rooms and narrowed the house maybe a few as well. What that does, it decreases the floor area. And what I've submitted for the board, you probably haven't tasted C A, but it's a proposed decision, which incorporates findings of fact that gives you the numbers on the project. And so as you're aware, when you have a property of less than ten thousand five hundred square feet, you don't review the project just in terms of site coverage, you review it in terms of building coverage or lot coverage and the maximum lot coverage in the seashore district is five percent. This project is actually, is actually keeping the exact same lot coverage that it had before. It's slightly bigger on the second floor than it is on the first floor, but the lot coverage is measured at the second floor, so it, it is exactly the same lot coverage that it was before. And then the, and that car, lot coverage is five hundred and twenty-seven square feet, or seventeen point six percent, is exactly what it was before. And then the, according to the Seashore's Certificate of Suspension and condemnation, the existing structure had a, had a, had livable areas of September first of nineteen fifty-nine, five hundred and four square feet in the, in.
Could you slow down just a little bit? You speak so rapidly.
Cape Cod National Seashore keeps records on the size of structures and they try to keep records of the size that existed on September first of nineteen fifty-nine, because that's the date that they sort of established a base floor of the size of the structure for the room, for actuating purposes. So the Cape Cod National Seashore adopted use guidelines and those use guidelines suggest that you shouldn't build a house that has more than one hundred and fifty percent of the livable floor area that existed as of September first of fifty-nine. So based on the Cap, Cape Cod National Seashore's own records, the structure had five hundred and four square feet of livable floor area. Now, that structure is a single-story structure set over a basement that has no stairways in it, so that's, that's in the entire floor area. The proposal now is three hu, is, I'm sorry, it's eight hundred and fifty-one square feet. So if you were to take five hundred and four square feet times one hundred and fifty percent, it would come out to seven hundred and fifty-six square feet, that would be the one hundred and fifty percent. And in your bylaw, in the Cape Cod National Seashore permit bylaw, there's a provision that says that you look at the one hundred and fifty percent as one of the factors in determining whether to issue a Cape Cod National Seashore special permit. You can go over that, but, but you have, you have to look at that and that's one of the conditions that you look at. This project, if you take floor area livable as defined by the seashore, that's the gross horizontal floor areas devoted to living, cooking, I'll, I'll, I'll read it to you quickly, it's in my, hold on a second. It says, "Some of the gross horizontal area of the floors of a dwelling used or intended to be used for living, sleeping, cooking, or eating purposes, excluding roofed porches, roofed terraces, cellar, and basements." Actually identical to the Wealth League zoning bylaws definition of floor area livable, except the Wealth League zoning bylaw doesn't include the words roofed porches or roofed terraces. You actually include those as part of building coverage. So this proposal, when you look at the floor plans, what it does is it, it proposes a stairway between the first and the second floor. If you remove that stairway, which we believe isn't a floor area and it's not devoted to living, sleeping, eating, cooking, we actually come in at seven hundred and fifty-nine square feet, three square feet over one hundred and fifty-two. So those are the numbers that we're at right now. To put this in the context, we, you know, we pulled the assessing records for the neighborhood because one of the things that you're doing as a part of this examination is you're relating this house to the neighborhood. What does the neighborhood look like? Is it consistent with the neighborhood? There are actually only three houses on that side of Kahoon Hall Road in the neighborhood, one right behind it, Martha Fields' house, one over, and then there's one between it and the water. You've all gone out there and looked at them. And I've included in my, on the fact, information that's taken directly off the, that's taken directly off the assessors' field cards for those three structures. The structure right behind this, which I think one of the abutters is objecting to this, is listing first floor area of eight hundred and sixty-four square feet, upper story finished area of eight hundred and sixty-four square feet, and lower level finished floor area of eight hundred and sixty-four square feet, for a total of two thousand five hundred and ninety-two square feet. That's roughly three point two or three point three times the size of this house. The house at nine twenty Ocean View Drive, which is the Field House, which kind of looks down on this, you know, when you're, when you're here, that has nine hundred and eighty-eight square feet on the first floor and upper story finished of three sixty-four, for a total of one thousand three hundred and fifty-two square, thirteen fifty-two. The structure that's just after this on the left-hand side heading out to the water, that's on that same road going down to the beach, actually consists of two dwelling units that are condominium form of ownership. They total a thousand square feet on the first floor and a thousand square feet on the second floor for two thousand square feet of floor area. So we have houses in the immediate neighborhood of twenty-five ninety-two, thirteen fifty-two, and two thousand. This house is proposed to be, even if you include the stairways, eight hundred and fifty-one square feet. It's, I think by any definition, it's a small house. I think the problem with this house isn't the size of the house. It's not that it's massive, it's not that it's in an intensity of use that's significantly different. The problem is where it's located. It's located immediately C-word of another house and, and you're going to hear from an abutter that doesn't like that. Well, there's no view easement in places like this, there's no right to a view on this property. And, and a two-story house with a utility basement is, is an extremely common form of dwelling structure, not only in Wealth League, but in this immediate neighborhood, you know, where we have houses that have three living air, floors of living area. So this house, if it weren't located immediately C-word of the Regan house, probably wouldn't engender the type of inquiry that we have here. So we have that and we have the fact that it's more than one hundred and fifty percent of the nineteen fifty-nine. There's no limitation on that number, it's just, you have to look at scale and massing and relationship of the neighborhood if you want to go over one hundred and fifty percent. And as we said at the last hearing, the house is being centered on the lot to allow for construction of a septic system. And we could certainly, if the board wanted, we could try to look at a way to maybe reconfigure that septic system and move this house further away from the house to the back, you know, by a few feet. I'm sure Tim could look at that and come up with a plan to, to move it further back towards the water. But we were trying to really get it as centered as possible and minimize the non-conformities as much as possible on the property, so I think we've done a good job to try to reduce the scope of the project, which is, I think, what the board was looking for. We've provided, I think, some pretty clear information about the neighborhood. I think this house is not going to stand out in the neighborhood. It's consistent, the architecture is, is attractive, it's, it's, it's conventional, you know, in terms of not outworn its architecture. And an eight hundred and fifty-one square foot two-bedroom house is not going to engender an intensity of use that's out of keeping with that neighborhood, it just isn't. So I'm, I'm hopeful that you all will see that, so all, thank you for your time and your energy and thank you for waiting.
Okay, we have two letters. We have a letter from the Seashore updating their May sixth letter and in their updated letter, they say, "We do not see a marked difference in this version over the prior one presented to the Z B A. Our May thirteenth letter is still applicable and we'd like to see further modifications to the proposal." We also have a letter from Ms. Bealan, who I believe may be in the audience.
You don't need to read it.
No, I, it's long, I don't need to read it. Is there anything further that you would like to say? Yeah, okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members, members of the board. My name's Kimberly Bealan. I know I have a loud mouth, but this is pretty, um, my name's Kimberly Bealan, I'm from, an attorney from Moriarty, Troyer, and Malloy, and we represent John and Karen Regan. So the primary issue with this application is that the Barasanos are trying to fit a house that's too big relative to the size of the lot. They purchased this house, they knew that there was a one-story dwelling, they knew that it was a three thousand square foot house, uh, excuse me, three thousand square foot lot, which is obviously extremely tight. And what they're trying to do there is not sensitive, obviously, to the zoning bylaws that this town has or to the environmental sensitivities in its location in the National Seashore. Since the last hearing at which a majority of the board expressed that they would not vote in favor of the project, there's been no meaningful attempt to alter the proposal to address concerns of the board, the National Seashore, or the Regans. In fact, one need to undertake, I think, a pretty significant or thorough examination of the plans, I know I had to, to figure out what the changes were. And you heard Attorney Zander tonight describe them as kind of squeezing two feet here, a foot and a half here. So very, very limited, I won't even call them modest, I think, limited changes to the initial proposal that came before this board back in May. That's pointed out by what Lauren McKean said in her comments on behalf of the National Seashore as well. So therefore, all the points that had been raised in, in opposition to this project as presented in May, I think, are certainly still viable. And the board's comments and your reactions to the project, I think, are probably still viable today as they were initially in May. I just wanted to highlight some, some points that were made in the letter. The property is less than one-tenth of an acre and what's required is three acres, so substantially undersized. The application proposes a reduction. The application proposes a reduction in the rear yard setback, it's approximately a two-thirds reduction in the setback that exists today, while at the same time going up two stories. So, there are significant changes that are proposed, and they will impact the Regans substantially. As you know, I'm sure you've been out to the site, the Regans' property is at 1105 Kahoon Hollow Road, excuse me, and it surrounds the property on three sides. So, one change is that the proposal now, and it's actually changed from what was initially proposed to you, seeks to maintain the lot coverage of 17.6 percent, and while adding decking and increasing the height of the structure. So, this is all going to increase the appearance of the bulk of the structure compared to what's there today. Contrary to what Attorney Zander says, this coverage is not in keeping, and building size is not in keeping with the neighborhood, because the property size here is substantially smaller. For example, the Regans' property, which surrounds the subject lot on three sides, is nine times the lot area of the subject parcel. So, and further contrary to the repeated statements, the overall living area of the Regans' property is actually 1,530 square feet, it's not 2,592 square feet. And I do have updated assessor's records I can submit to the board that shows that that's the square footage of the property. There's an unfinished basement at the Regans' property. So, looking at the size, I think, looking in the proposed findings of fact that Attorney Zander submitted today, it makes a lot about the sizes of the neighboring structures, and there is a limited kind of sample area there, but those structures aren't substantially bigger lots. So, I think it's disingenuous to look at these structure, the sizes of the structures in isolation, and without any care or concern about the sizes of the lots that those structures are on. As Attorney Zander himself points out, the livable floor area continues to be inconsistent with the National Seashore's 50 percent use guideline, which is, which the board is required to consider in issuing the special permit. The proposal also lacks key information to assess the compliance with the bylaw, and I specifically direct you to the National Seashore Park gross floor area calculation. In calculating gross floor area for this zoning district, there is, the following shall be included, that includes garage space, basements except, you know, subject to certain limitations, total deck area if it's over 400 square feet. I reviewed the plans, I couldn't come up with some of the information that would be necessary to determine what those calculations would be. We'll say, appears the garage space was not included, I studied the plans, the basement, it says, is not included in the floor area calculation, and that would include the garage space that is supposed to be included within the zoning bylaw definition. It appears that some of the basement space is not used exclusively for utilities, that should be included, and then again, the square footage of the decks that's over 400 square feet should also be included. And it should be noted that they're maintaining, you know, they're maintaining the lot coverage, so 17.6 percent is substantially over the 5 percent. They're not proposing to reduce it, they're basically raising the building, starting from scratch, and are making no meaningful attempt to make changes or to scale down the project or the house that's there on the property. For all the reasons that are discussed in the letter, and I'll certainly refer you to the letter, the Barisanos have failed to demonstrate that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood what they're proposing. And I'll cite, or refer you to what Attorney Zander submitted today to this board for proposed findings of fact. The south-side yard setback will be more nonconforming, the north-side yard setback will be more nonconforming, the west rear yard setback will be more nonconforming. The proposal will intensify the nonconforming nature of the existing dwelling, since it will increase the volume of the dwelling within the setbacks by the addition of a second story. These are all findings that the applicant's counsel is saying you should make in connection with this project, so it's difficult to reconcile the fact that it's going to be more nonconforming for setbacks, for volume, with the fact that they're seeking approval of this application. Just a couple more notes, and I appreciate your time. The Regans have been more than reasonable and gone above and beyond, I'm sure this board's familiar, there was an attempted land swap a couple of years ago, so they have tried to be reasonable, they have tried to work with them, but they have serious concerns relative to privacy, increased density certainly within the setbacks, and certainly their views are impacted. And contrary to what Attorney Zander says, this board is to take into account views for developed properties, and I'm sure you're well aware of the special permit criteria, but Section 8.4.23 notes that building and site design including consideration of the following, whether scenic views from public ways and developed properties have been considerably treated, and here, there's been no consideration to the Regans' views. Finally, I would just say, I know the Regans, this has come before the board, it seems like there's been a proposal, previous owners, and now these owners, so we would ask that the board close the public hearing and proceed to a denial vote. We understand the ramifications of that, but we're hopeful that that would, I guess, spur the property owners to come back with a proposal that really takes into consideration what the Regans have said as abutters, what the National Seashore has said in connection with this application and the previous application a couple of years ago. This sized dwelling is not appropriate on this sized lot. And I sat on the zoning board in Falmouth for a number of years, and this, I think, is something common, people buy a property, they want to come in and kind of over-maximize, that's kind of the term that was used at our board, over-maximize the site and put something there that doesn't fit on the site, and I think that this is a textbook example. Somebody coming in from out of town, the Regans have owned property in Wellfleet since 1995, they're, you know, have been here a long time, and somebody's coming in and really substantially trying to change the abutting property without any due concern for the National Seashore, the zoning bylaws in this town, and certainly the Regans, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who needs to speak to this?
Is there anybody from the audience?
Yeah, anybody else from the audience who would like to speak to this? I don't think so, I think we've driven everyone out. Okay, I guess I'll start in this, on this direction.
Mm?
Is it anything we have not heard?
Yes. First of all, I misspoke, the reduction of height was two and a half feet, not a, the reduction of height was two and a half feet, not a foot and a half, so I undersold that. National Seashore, I sit here month in and month out, the National Seashore always writes a letter, they don't like it, they just don't seem to want to see redevelopment in the area, so I, you know, there, the Seashore's objections weren't specific, they were just, we still don't like it. I forgot to tell the board that the Barisanos also reduced the width of the deck on the north side of the property, so it can't be sat on, which means that that's the deck that is closest to the Regan's view over the property, so there's no activity on that side of the house. The reason that the National Seashore gross floor area is not more fully vetted than this is because it's not a factor in lots of less than 10,500 square feet. You don't calculate National Seashore site coverage for lots less than 10,500 square feet, so that's why there's no more information on that. In terms of trying to be reasonable, the Barisanos lost almost a year and tens of thousands of dollars to explore a land swap with the Regans, so they could locate their house outside of this area. And the land swap involved an identical lot with identical placement on that lot of the larger house that was before you last time, and the Regans didn't have a problem with it. So, it's certainly reasonable for them to come in and say, "We don't like this in front of us, we don't like the height, we don't like what it's doing to our view," but to say that it's over-maximizing the land, or it's over-development of the land, or it's out of keeping with the lot size, they were fine with it if it wasn't going to be right in front of them. So, the design, and the height, and the relative placement on the lot, the center of the lot just weren't a problem before, so I think that those comments are a little misplaced in terms of why this is not an appropriate development. So, and that's, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. I'm going to go to the board. Rita. Manny? Questions?
No questions.
Mick did not have any questions. Manny has no questions.
Oh, me?
Manny has no questions either.
Oh.
And you, sir?
I have a question. I do. I have a comment, and, you know, I think that the height of the house is certainly in character with the rest of the neighborhood, but it's, the problem is putting that house on 3,000 square feet in the National Seashore, and that's the problem I see. But Ben, I just have a comment to you about the proposed findings of fact that you sent, which came in really, really late, and I had just barely time to skim it, because I didn't see it till 3:30, didn't come in until like 1:00 something. Number four on page two, you say the locus of the property is 195 Sammaset Avenue, you might want to change that.
Well, I really sent them over as for Chris to work with it, I just missed that. I was working on it, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Sure.
We don't want to go that route, we really don't.
Can I close the hearing, go to?
Go to discussion.
What?
Go to discussion.
Want to close the hearing, or you want to discuss?
Yes, I'll close the hearing.
What?
No, I can, I'm not ready to go to, I'm not ready to go to findings of fact, I want to hear from the board on discussion first, but I can close the hearing for that. So, I need a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so.
What are you, calling somebody?
All right. Mr. Lynch?
Oh, God, calling somebody else. Seriously.
All right. I got a problem with this one. I got a serious problem with this one, and the big problem I have with this one is where it is. And I think that the whole point of zoning, if you're going to do it at all, is to give the neighbors some understanding of what their neighborhood is going to look like. And if somebody has a house, and the neighbor's house is in a certain location, and there are setbacks, they have a reasonable expectation that that house is not going to pick up and move right on top of them. And so, while I appreciate that other houses are bigger, those other houses are not before us tonight. The only house that is before us is this one, and it's not on the footprint. And so, I, you know, and it's, so I got a problem with that. I cannot imagine building a two-story house in a different place from where everybody in the neighborhood saw that house as being up until the house was sold. That's my two cents.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I agree with Ben that it is not a big house, I agree with Ben that the house is not out of character with the neighborhood. However, I also agree with the neighbor's attorney more strongly that it is too big for that lot. Yes, the neighboring house is, you know, some amount larger, it's 2,592, or it's 1408, depending on what you read, they have nine times the land. And that's the way zoning works, you have more land, you can build a bigger house, you have less land, you can build a smaller house. The applicant did not have land taken away from them, the applicant bought the land knowing that they had 3,000 square feet.
Yep. Yeah, I want your opinion.
You didn't call on me, so I didn't.
Mr. Drucker.
I'm trying to be polite.
Mr. Drucker.
No, I feel like, you know, the 11th guy on a football team is piling on the runner who's down, but, you know, I hate to.
That's football.
Well, you know, the ultimate test is, is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. The Regans are in the neighborhood, I think it's substantially more detrimental to them, and I would not vote for this.
Ben, can you, well, try to come up with hopefully a better plan? Get the, get the house away from the back, maybe forward.
Let me just say, I don't want to mislead you, I mean, I think, at least from my perspective, you're going to have trouble with a two-story house on this 3,000-square-foot lot.
Yes.
No matter where you put it. Now, I'm not saying I would vote against, I'm not, if you're going to come back, but I don't want to mislead you and your architect and the property owner.
No, I appreciate that, I appreciate the comment now.
I don't think we're looking for a minor change.
No, that's.
Well, I'm just saying, I, you know, I don't want to see.
That's the thing, I don't want to, I don't want to play this by inches.
Right.
You know, I mean, this is a serious, you know, we gotta, we need to, if we're going to approve a house on this lot, we need a substantive change, something that isn't going to make, and, you know, it is true, we have learned to our, you know, to be very careful about the right to a view, because yes, in fact, in the Wellfleet zoning bylaw, there is a right to a view, so.
I, I disagree on that point.
I know, but.
It's just one of the considerations, whether it's been considerably treated, there's no right to a view.
Right.
Obviously, Ben, the second story is a big problem for the board, I think, that's my opinion.
Yep.
And if you can somehow work it into the basement, you have a great architect, you should be able to do that.
Right.
Because I think you were only the eighth guy, there's still a couple people left.
I'll give my two cents, I'm not going to pile on, but you heard the board, what needs to be done, and it needs to be a lot more substantial than what we saw.
So.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. So, when we bought it, we were told we had to move the house from the current lot lines because it's over the lot line. I'm happy to put it wherever it's required, but based on the setbacks, we put it where your bylaws tell us to put it, so I'm just looking for guidance on what you, what you want to do, and what you would, what you won't object to when we come back on where we put it. That would be helpful, because I don't want to go through inches either, I'm just looking for a little guidance.
I believe, according to the existing site plan, it's only the deck that's over the setback, the house itself is not over the property line.
Right.
The current, well, I'm okay with that, but we were told when I, before I bought it, that the town was telling us we had to move the house. So, I'm not saying I had to move it, if you tell me what the guideline is, I'll follow that guideline.
Who told you that?
When we bought it.
Yeah, but who told you?
It was in the listing.
Yes.
I believe it was driven by separate considerations.
It was separate considerations, but the houses, if the houses were in the lot lines, then you're not going to move it, I'll see.
You don't need to.
You don't need to move it.
It's grandfathered.
Yeah.
Although, changing it isn't grandfathered, once you change the house, it's not, so that's why they, that's what they apparently meant.
They need a special permit.
Yeah, that's right.
For what?
Well, the problem is, the house, he says, is over the.
Is it the house or the deck?
It's not, it's the house.
If it's just that, it's.
The house is not over the property line.
So, it's just the deck.
Not according to the site plan that you submitted.
So, you don't have to move the house.
I know.
You don't have to move the house.
You don't got to move your house.
Remove the deck.
I believe that in order to upgrade the septic system, which is required as condition of sale, the house was going to have to move to allow the location of a leach field, but I wasn't involved in that stage, it was, I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, but the discussion, I mean, again, Ben, you know how I feel about having the board trying to design the house.
I do, I appreciate your reticence, I do.
But the issue is not, I mean, primarily the location of the house, although we're sensitive to setback, it's the height, you know, it's a 3,000 square-foot lot. I think it's probably the smallest lot, or if not, the second smallest lot we've ever dealt with on this board.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really tiny.
I'm going to ask the board if we can withdraw our prejudice.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your time, and thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
Our pleasure.
For you, Ben, of course.
You're really thanking us for waiting, well, we did.
I always thank you for your time, no matter what happens.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben.
By the way, we take, were you in Provincetown?
I was in Eastham and then Provincetown, yeah.
Yeah, I noticed how well you dress for Provincetown.
I usually have a motorcycle when I come to the.
That's right. He's usually wearing his chaps when he shows up.
Okay, there is one other thing that we need to talk about, and that is that now that Trevor is no longer an alternate, we need another alternate.
Yep.
And Mick has already talked about, he's got a couple of ideas. I think what I would say is, put your feelers out as to who might be interested, but let's make sure that we coordinate with each other so that we don't start asking two people and then have a.
A conundrum.
Yes, so, you know, if you've got ideas, let's run. So, you know, if you've got ideas, let's run them by each other, and then we can maybe come up with...
Just send out a note by email that you have an unsuspecting victim, and the rest of us will stop looking.
That's right.
Anybody with a pulse?
You get somebody with a pulse.
Say, you know?
Yes, who's, yep, that would be great.
Everyone I know is already on the board, so...
No, me too. I don't know anybody else.
All right.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I will second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I didn't get to s...